Realizing how it pretty much just.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're like, what's his last name?
Yeah.
We know his family here. And I met in Pittsburgh. Like in college.
They what?
I said they had met in Pittsburgh in college, like wasn't even like. Anything you could have predicted.
Hello?
Hi. Kenny doesn't trust.
No change. I trust you plenty. That's not the reason.
He doesn't trust me.
Sure.
Is there a sign up or do you just ask that at some point?
There's a sign up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Trust is not the issue.
I'm glad you're welcome for coming together. Trust in there.
Have a comment?
Yeah.
You don't need a motion to you can just open to close it.
And a motion and a vote.
You don't tell two people what they want.
Yes.
Sure. Probably doesn't hurt. I can double check that before next meeting.
I I was thinking about it. I was like, I'm not sure on Robert's rules on that one.
Roberts, Bobby's.
You know, whatever, whatever it is.
Robbie's rules. I'm not sure.
John Jacob. Do you want time in the beginning or do you want time at each interval? For feedback comments as you worked here last time?
Um, I'm good on. Uh. What happened at the last meeting?
Okay.
Um, so I'd say we just keep on.
Chugging?
Chugging along.
Chugging along, chugging.
At least don't man, you guys are all on triple secret, not secret probation? I don't know, just making random stuff up.
See everybody? Uh, in the car, I already have them. There's so many pages to this thing. I was confused. Follow the images of this document. All right, my my wrist has just buzzed, which means.
Good evening, everybody. It is the Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Carbondale Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome, um. Kay, can you take a please taking a role for us?
Franco Colombo.
It's on mute.
Here.
Ann Crimmer.
Here.
Jesse Garcia.
Here.
Isaplesio. Jared Moore.
Here.
Kim McGee.
Here.
Jeff Daven. Captain Nicholas DeFrank.
Present.
Thank you, Kay. Uh, so voting privileges tonight, uh, I think is Jeff is the only missing body that puts. And well, uh, two, four, six, I put this all as voters tonight. Um. Any conflicts of interest to disclose at this point? I I this is the same group as always, but just to check back in. All right, we can move on past that. Um, digging into the consent agenda. Does any commissioner have any comments on that?
No comments. Thank you again, Kay.
Seeing no comments, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve minutes from. October twenty third.
I'll second that motion.
First goes to Jared. Jesse has the second. Thank you, gentlemen. And so at this point, I'm going to reopen public comment from our October twenty third meeting. Uh, if anyone here tonight is um here to discuss. Any items outside of the ADU regulations, I'm sorry, um, this is public, I don't have to open that. I'm sorry. Um, this is just for public comment outside of ADU regulations. So. Uh, and Kay, do we have anybody else online besides Franco and Kim? Nope. Okay, thank you. So are either of you gentlemen here tonight to make a comment outside of ADU regulations? All right. Moving on into our action item for the evening. ADU or accessory dwelling unit regulations, code text amendment. This has been continued a couple of times. We've been working hard on this. Uh, thank you all for um being here in one way or another this evening. I appreciate it. I know we've all put a lot of hard work into this. Um, and. I think we've an opportunity tonight to wrap it up. Um, according to my notes, we worked through. The remaining items, we had a few outstanding items, I guess, as far as refinement on a few of the items. Um. However, we have kind of initiated discussions on all of the, I guess, uh, kind of sub area or dis- or discussion points. For ADUs at this point. With that, um, so Jared, you have no opening comments for staff at this time, or would you like to?
Sure. Um, so, you know, as as Nick pointed out, I think we've worked through kind of a lot of the. Um, initial set of discussion topics staff brought up. What do you see in the first or in the packet before you guys tonight is kind of the two remaining items, I believe, um, have yet to be discussed? Kind of acknowledgement of attached versus detached. Um, you uh in the Old Town Residential and other zone districts and then kind of a more in-depth conversation about the development review process. Um, once we kind of get some initial feedback from the Planning and Zoning Commission on that. Um, we will ultimately request that the P and Z um continue the public hearing. Uh, so that staff can take all the feedback from the P and Z, draft up some um. Actual code language and kind of come back to you with something a little more uh refined for. Um, tweaking, fine tuning. Things like that. And then ultimately, hopefully, a recommendation to the. Uh, Board of Trustees for amendments to ADU regulations.
Great. Thanks, Jared. Um, before we dig into our last two, does anybody here want to review or have another? Um. Pass, actually, you know, I should now need to reopen the public comment. Um, so. Um, so pardon me, kind of keep things in order here, um, before I get ahead of myself. I'm going to reopen public comment at this time, um, as it can, this is a continued item. So if either of you gentlemen would are here to uh to add anything to um. Current or 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 new, uh, would love to have you go up to the mic, state your name and address, and feel free to add anything into the record on this topic.
Hi there. Thank you for letting me be here again tonight. Um. My name is Kenny Titler. I live at two oh six South Third Street here in Carbondale. And I would like to just have one more moment of your time, please, to talk about the impervious coverage. Last time when I was here talking to you. The.
You're.
Not the board, what kind, you said what you are.
Uh.
Commissioners. The commissioners mentioned as a majority that they were interested in changing from forty two to fifty two OTR. With a couple of people coming in between forty and fifty was what the consensus was there. Since having that discussion and talking to you, I came to the open house for the Historic Preservation Committee. I'm not sure if I'm saying that exactly right. And during that open house, I was able to talk to Jared. And Jared mentioned to me during that time that changing impervious. Is not possible during this time under being able to change the impervious from forty two to fifty two because it wasn't noticed. In the talk about ADUs and therefore it would be against the law and. Even if people were wanting to it, do that, it would not be able to do that as a change to the UDC. Am I stating that correctly, Jared?
Uh, yeah, generally.
Okay, so if there's. And then when I mentioned to Jared. That he was saying if it was to be noticed, it would have to have gone out in the original notice of changing that in order to be able to do that. With the fact that you had mentioned that you seemed to be on board having that change. When I've talked to trustees, they seem on board and wanting to have that change. Also, when I look at what it says in your um. In the. Board minutes or it says that the goal identified by the Board of Trustees and P and Z at the outset of ADU regulations. Was to simplify the review process and make ADU development easier. Talking to the trustees and then talking to Jared actually before. He said, the way that is still possible to happen is if there was one of these. I um an impervious ILC bonus, a developmental bonus, a development bonus. Which was in one of the previous discussions where you talked about. Giving a quarter of the. Square footage of an ADU towards this impervious. If my question to you all, which I would like to hear your response to and hear your thoughts on, if you were. As a board seeming willing to go from forty two to fifty two or entertain that thought and it seemed to me from the discussion that you were. Willing to move in that direction. I'm curious if you would still be willing to look at making this developmental bonus. And making an ADU exempt from the impervious, which would be able to fall in from what I'm understanding from Jared within this same. Way that is being presented now, what that would do is if you were still in the idea of moving from forty two to fifty two. Which was given an extra five hundred fifty square feet of impervious. To be able to do that, to still offer up that five hundred and fifty square feet as a bonus. And the developmental impervious bonus, it accomplishes the same. Means of being able to have ADU development. The concern I understand from Jared is that maybe people will look at this as a loophole. And will say, we just want to build our house bigger and then the ADU isn't really an ADU. But if you were already willing to go fifty two when we were thinking that, or my understanding was when that was the thought that that was. Possible, that was able. Then I'm not understanding why there would be a difference of wanting to do the five hundred and fifty, five hundred and fifty. Feet as in ADU impervious development bonus exemption. It.
I I I think Kenny, um, with respect, I I think we understand um. Your your personal situation and interest in in this topic. And I I think um. Appreciate you've kind of, you've really kind of made that clear and helped us, I think, as a commission, learn about. Um, from a. Private homeowner perspective, kind of the the value and the impacts of this. I think at this time, what this commission is is trying to do, and Jared, please feel free to jump in if I'm out of line here. Um, we are trying to identify um a a series of of items. And then um that will help with ADUs townwide. Um. And although there's a specific value for the OTR and and this topic of um. Lot coverage, I think that getting down to this level, um, I'm not sure that if if that's the right. Or if we were prepared right now to go to that degree. Um. I think what we're trying to do is identify or, you know, as a commission. Respond to the BOT's request to look at this. Um, and look at the the topic items to see what we can do, like you said, that top line item. Of trying to make ADUs more accessible and if and when and where possible, make it an easier process for folks throughout Carbondale. Um, at the end of tonight, like Jared opened with. Staff will kind of take what we've worked through over these last three, four meetings and put that into. Um, language that only they can understand. Um. I'm joking there, um, but using, um, I I think. Hmm, a very appropriate language, kind of, uh, that would go into a code text amendment. From there, that goes up to the BOT as a suggestion uh from from us. I am not sure if what you're asking for is within the reins of what we're trying to do or with um. Or wholly, I I guess, appropriate is part of what we're trying to do. Um, at at this stage of the game, I think we're trying to bring this in for a landing. And so bringing in. New elements and new items to specifically benefit. Um, I think. A situation of homeowners in in a in the OTR with a certain, I think, a situation on property coverage and home size. Um. I I. I don't want to speak too out of place here, but it it does feel like it's kind of spooling some things back up for us. Um, I'm not sure if there's a way to. Uh, and I'm also just, to be totally honest with you, I I'm not as familiar with this lot bonus with with the with the. Precedent of it, the function of it, the legality of it, and and what it would take to even bring that in. So I'm. I'm going to be honest and just plead ignorance to that um as a tool uh in our toolkit right now. Um, and so I I think, again, speaking for myself, I'm not sure if there's another commissioner who is more familiar with this as a policy. Um, I wouldn't personally be comfortable. Trying to bring that in without background knowledge or preparation. That would feel, I think, a little bit irresponsible.
Could I ask two more questions and then I'll listen to. The responses and that would be.
Responses as in?
Or if there is a response.
Uh, this is not really a question and answer, kind of. Typically, you give about three minutes.
Okay.
To present and so.
Can I try, try, kind of leave with two questions? Number one was this lot bonus was an original idea that was brought up as an alternative. So if that was the case, I would have. Assume that it is within the legality of it. And secondly, just if you were willing last week as a majority to say, we're willing to have that amount of lot coverage, why you would not. Be willing to have that amount of lot coverage now. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you, folks? Uh, me again. I'm John Williams, seven, seven, eight, Sopers Avenue. Um. I'm hoping to. Uh. Make my comments quick and simple. Uh, basically, quick and simple is what my comments are. Um, I would like to see you folks. Keep the process of um. Of applying for an ADU easy for all of us to understand, not just our. Code enforcement language translators. Um, and make it the uh something that we can all understand and do. And get with not too many hoops to jump through, such as making it just a. Used by right thing. Um, and um. Um, have a staff review to it, um, put a sign out in front and uh go from there, get it done. Um, I don't really feel like I have the right to tell my neighbors what they can and can't do with their property. So they really shouldn't be able to tell me as long as it's not something that. As long as it's a safe item. Um, I wouldn't want to see my neighbors cooking meth in their in their kitchen, that kind of stuff, something not quite so safe. Uh, but as long as it's um gets along with the neighborhood, I think it should be just fine. Um, all the zone districts should have the same regulations. One zone district shouldn't have this and not that and vice versa. Everything should be equal to it. Uh, we should have attached and detached. Uh, available in all the zone districts, uh, and making it the owner's choice to whatever they want to build. Um, excuse me, the impervious surface could be increased slightly. It is kind of. Uh, tight to be able to do that, but um. I'm kind of going along with all the other regulations that we have, seem to be pretty good. I would like to see the impervious surface. Um, increased. I'd like to see the sizes of ADUs possible. Able to make a smaller one or able to make a bigger one uh for whatever you need, as long as it fits into the lot. And kind of uh. Fits into the neighborhood and the block that it's on also. Um. Keeping the language basically where you don't have to be a lawyer or a um. Code enforcement guru genius or whatever to be able to figure this out, just be, keep it plain and simple. And um, that uh. That's pretty much all I got. Thank you. You guys are doing pretty good. This is not an easy task to take on. And uh, so you guys are, I thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thanks for coming, John. Appreciate it. All right. Would you like a motion? Would you like a vote? How would you like to us to close this public comment today?
Yeah, why not a motion and vote?
All right.
Motion to close public comment.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, nice habit. Public comment is closed uh for this session. And at this time, we can move into a commissioner discussion. Um. So where I left off earlier before uh having to kind of put things back in order, public comment. Um, does any commissioner want to? So tonight, the two items that uh staff has outlined for us. Um, as far as still kind of remaining questions are the attached versus detached. As well as the development review process. Outside of that. Size, bedroom count, parking. Some of the other items, um, improper slot coverage, design standards. Does anybody have anything that that they feel in review of the packet tonight? Needs to be corrected or they have additional comments on? Or can we let those things lie and move on to the two final items?
I have a follow up, I guess, in response to Kenny here. Um, Ellie, last meeting, we were discussing about increasing that impervious lot coverage in OTR and you said you. It would be brought up to, and I think it's in the notes too, that it'd be brought up to the H uh HPC. Um. Are we still doing that? Like, how, what was that?
We have a timing issue on that.
Yeah, you'd have to like re-initiate a code change specifically for impervious lot coverage to do that. If you were really gung ho about it. And yeah, it'd start at HPC and then yeah, go up.
And 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 the reason is, um. What we noticed was a very specific conversation. About accessory dwelling units. And so what the public's aware of is a conversation about accessory dwelling units. Not about dimensional standards such as building height, lot setback, impervious lot coverage for an entire zone district. And so people who might have an interest in that topic. Aren't aware that that's part of the public discourse and conversation that we're going to be having. And so they don't have an opportunity to participate. You've heard from one, two community members who um. Believe that that impervious lot coverage for the OTR should be increased. But there's a lot more properties in the OTR. There's properties adjacent to the OTR. There there's a lot of other interested parties who need to be aware of that conversation before making those decisions. Um, who might have valuable input that that could sway. In addition, there's a a significant amount of background that we didn't provide in. Any of these conversations about how the OTR came to be. When the OTR came to be, what the OTR was before it became the OTR. Um, back in two thousand eight. It was part of the residential low density zone district and the town broke off those properties that are currently zoned OTR. From residential low density to OTR and specifically set lower thresholds for lot coverage. Um, lower thresholds for lot size. And so there was some, some very specific reasons why those decisions were made. And I think it's um, it it's. Pertinent to your guys' review and the public process to understand those before just making determinations that might change that. Um, based on the desire to. Increase um opportunities for ADUs. And so I think that is why we're kind of pushing back and saying, if that's a conversation that we want to have. Let's have a conversation about what is our appropriate dimensional standards for the Old Town Residential Zone District and what um. And allow the community to kind of provide us feedback on that. So hopefully that gives you a little kind of um understanding. I think we probably have some other. Pretty big code amendments kind of on the immediate horizon. And so if that's something that's. Extremely important to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, we probably have to talk about some of the other things on our radar and how something like that fits in, whether that. Um, is before, say, parking or um affordable housing development regulations or. Um, some state mandated landscape regulations that we have to address or or things like that. So. Um. You know, hopefully that's kind of a a thirty thousand foot overview on on that impervious lot coverage discussion.
Yeah.
Um, and and I don't want to really necessarily unpack the conversation at the previous meeting regarding the. The development bonus for ADUs. We're happy to come back at a staff level. With code amendments and have a more kind of thoughtful conversation with you guys about why we didn't support that concept. Where we see a lot of loopholes, a lot of complexity, a lot of challenges with. That concept and how that might not achieve kind of some of the outset goals of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Trustees. Um, and so that's why we didn't really provide any additional information in tonight's packet for that conversation.
Uh, yeah, I, thanks for addressing it. I I figured there was something special to those numbers. They were pretty weird. So I figured there was a reason for that. Um. And I think we, didn't we already talk about impervious lot coverage, like within the last two years? Yeah, so.
I I think it's also been, we need to spend a lot of time on it, right? I and. I think what we've heard in the past from the BOT is that. Um. Sometimes um. Discussions that happen within this commission. You know, uh. There are technical elements that are actually kind of important for them to understand or at least hear and acknowledge and either deny or or. Allow them to mull it over and kind of and and look at it and consider it and then send it back down or at their level, make a decision. If this commission feels that the conversations that you all have had in your opinions on impervious lot coverage are. Important enough, I think we can put a note in the packet that goes up to BOT. Outside of the the le- the recommended language.
Mm hmm.
And let that be kind of a a bolt on. Kind of, hey, like a kind of like, almost like a zoning highlighter, like, hey, we didn't, this, like, like Jared kind of explained, this is too big for now. It was outside of the bounds and realms of our, of the exercise and the process. But we, as a commission. Believe and recommend or would like the be you as the BOT to look at this more in depth. Is that, is that a fair?
Yeah.
Kind of, this is a tool that we've heard from o- over the years from them, just to kind of almost like, kind of like a little like flag on a certain item. And this this, I think, would be a really appropriate moment for that, if this commission feels. Um, that way about it. And as a reminder, last week, um, or last session, sorry, last meeting, um, we did have Cindy, Kim, Ann and Franco. Um, at that kind of looking to open things up um by a a margin of ten percent. And then Jared and I were a little bit more conservative, but still open to the idea of some modification.
To that lock of. Coverage.
So there was, I think, on some level, some interest in that. Um, but I I I do want to kind of go back to what Jared said. For lack of a better term, we are opening up a can of worms uh with that. And I I spoke to it a little bit when we looked at it, started talking about it last time. So. If you all would like, and this is great, thanks for bringing this back, Jared. If you all would like, we can um. Put a note in that packet. Um, and and send it back up to the BOT, like, hey, would love you all to kind of think about this more and give us some guidance here. Um, and and send it back up to the BOT, like hey, would love you all to kind of think about this more and give us some guidance here. Or or not.
Yeah.
May may I ask?
Yeah, Frank.
And I I understand, um, sorry, could I make it today? I I understand the OTR is like a specific zone district. But it it sounds like and and what we have existing in our code and, you know, previous lock coverage three point eight point five. You know, we already do have an exemption for parking spaces of specific to accessory dwelling units. Can exceed the impervious lock coverage maximum of up to six hundred feet. So we do already have this exemption in the code. So for I I it sounds like if we're not speaking specifically to a zone district like OTR. But speaking specifically to the ADU ordinance, then there could be. Additional exemptions that we can create within this code section. I just want to make sure we're. Cleared on that.
Thank you for bringing that up. Um.
I think y- yes, that kind of what Kenny said, yes, that is a pathway if you guys feel very passionate about. Um, an ADU exemption for impervious lock coverage. Um, you know, as we kind of put in our initial memo and and we are more than happy to expound upon. If we're talking about simple, easy to understand, easy to implement regulations. I think an exemption like that would kind of fly in the face of that, not only initially, but long term. It would be very challenging for town staff to track and document every exemption that was given. For an ADU, and then more importantly, down the road, when interior uses change in spaces. Um, you know, you create a lot of non-conforming situations. Where you're basically putting a future property owner or even the current property owner down the road. In a very precarious situation where they now have development that exceeds. The lot coverage for that zone district, and they have to make difficult choices of do I remove habitable space? Do I remove site access? Do I remove all sort of outdoor amenities on my property? To bring a property into compliance because uh, say five hundred square foot exemption was given for an ADU. But that space is no longer being used as an ADU. Um, it's very easy for someone to say, I have a kitchen, I'm going to remove the kitchen, I want to turn that into a. Workout room, uh, home office, uh, storage space, whatever that might be. And many of those changes don't require building permits, don't require check-ins with the town. And then you have a future property owner being like, well, I want to do something else with this space or do something else with this property. And now I'm in a situation where the town's telling me no. And it all kind of stemmed from this ADU exemption, and so the one of the big reasons, I think. Staff is kind of pushing back on this concept is it creates a lot of challenges. And it doesn't really achieve that goal that everyone set out for. Simple, easy to understand and to implement processes. Um, and it creates a ton of nuance. Um, and it isn't something that we've broadly heard the community say that, you know. That overall lot coverage is a limiting factor. We've heard it in very seldom situations. There's other avenues that could be pursued, such as variances or other things like that that allow for relief from the code. But we haven't heard broadly from the community that. Lot coverage is the limiting factor. What we have heard is ADU size, allowing for a larger size is something that's important. We're also not precluding um, every property from from pursuing an ADU. We might just say from a lot coverage standpoint that a detached or a ground level ADU. May not be appropriate on this property, that it might have to be attached, it might have to be a second story, a basement. Something already within the footprint of what's existing. Um, in order to achieve that, and the property still could have an ADU, and a lot of properties still could. It may not be the most advantageous, but it's not saying you can't have an ADU, and so I think those are some some factors that are. Kind of, you know, at play in this conversation of ADU exemption. With all of that being said, if it's something that the Planning Zoning Commission is. Really wants to see, we'll we'll happily work with you to create whatever exemption that you guys want to see. And we can um, forward that recommendation, but there there likely won't be much staff support for for that. Concept with this group or with the Board of Trustees, just being very honest and forthright with you all on that.
And I think what I'd like to kind of then kind of come back to you all with, um, as usual, I'm I'm going to play the bookending game. Right, let's let's play, let's play a a little bit of worst case, best case scenario, so we can kind of get our heads, at least looking at the extremes. I think Franco, I I appreciate your side of it and and really, on on one hand, let's like the best case scenario is it it opens up. The potential for ADUs at a reasonable size for more people. Which means in our OTR and other kind of especially challenged lots. We can provide a, we can provide ADUs or offer ADUs to our community. And therefore provide housing solutions for folks, right? That's the best, the that's the better or best case scenario. On the worst case side, what happens is similar to what Jared has described. A, we open up a a large loophole wherein new development. Uh, a a a property is scraped, a new home is built with an ADU. And upon getting that CO, that ADU is shifted in use and function to a home gym. Or another use of of some sort, and and there's no identification of that, it it becomes its own kind of rogue. Um, thing that basically allows for a larger home. So I'm not, I'm just kind of, as usual, I think you all know this this game I play by now, you know, to to help understand the the extents. Of of this. Um, so. I look back to all of you, um, just with the with that. I'd I'd love to hear from each of you on your thoughts and kind of responses to this topic. Do you want uh, us to kind of push further on this one? Um, and with respect to staff, we we we've heard, uh, we've we've heard staff stance on it and. And this is a volunteer group, so we were asked to to do something, and if you feel strongly, that is up to you. Um, as with individuals and then us as a commission. I think at a minimum, we're still sending this up and and as I see it, we're sending it up as a combat. Uh, pardon me, comment or inquiry to the BOT for more guidance and more feedback on or more discussion at their level. But if there's something more that we'd like to consider, similar to what Franco has described, um, I would love to hear from you all.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Please.
So that every, the only thing that's at forty two percent is LTR. And we don't really know the reason, you know, the reason why they did that in two thousand eight?
Yeah, I just, I I haven't gone through the entire history, and that's why the conversation is bigger than than this. All, every one of those properties was on residential low density, and so there was a.
Yeah, and I and I I don't know either acutely, but I I think like what I said before is um. If if I were to make a or throw a general dart. Um, the idea at the reduced lot coverage is based on character, is based on maintaining a certain amount of balance between. Uh, structure, built environment and and kind of the percentage of that in open space or green space. Um, looking at historic character of homes, scale of homes. Um, and and there's so much more, but they're just to like, I I think it's it's an educated guess, that's where I would I would start. But but I think again, Jerry makes a good point, there's a lot there, that that this the commission is not informed on and that we have not um. Really cracked it, cracked into it. Um, so I think that should be acknowledged by by each of you. That there's probably quite a bit that that we don't know on that. Does that, does that help in any way?
Kind of, it just, it doesn't, I'd love to to know more because there. What what they thought, what they were looking at in two thousand eight and what's happening in two thousand twenty five and twenty six. I think is a whole, is a very different town. We've changed so much.
Absolutely.
I mean, it used to be cow fields when we built our house and it's changed, so maybe we should. Consider those changes, not now, but it is something the BOT should look at too, because I've heard from them.
Yeah.
They're interested in that.
Yeah, I I I think you're right. I think given the the charge that they've passed out to us on this topic.
Yeah.
And as we've turned over a lot of stones, this is one that we've turned over, but it it seems like there was a bigger stone underneath. For pardon the metaphor, you know, um, so um, but you're right, that has changed a lot, um, even in the last. You know, you know, not that long, like last five to ten years, so fair comment. Franco, Kim, any more comments? I don't want to forget about you guys, uh, so checking in. Okay, gotcha.
I just I just want to say, I just want to say that my comment was not a comment, it's it's existing code, so. It's it's, there was a, there must have been some sort of reasoning behind whoever did this code. Uh, to have this exemption in the first place.
I don't imagine planners ever have a reason for anything, just arbitrary, just things.
Yeah, they do everything on the whim, they don't ever plan things out.
Yeah, but no, I I think it was a good point, Franco, and and um, I think it helps us close up this topic, um, one way or the other, so it was a good reference. Appreciate you pointing it to us. Uh, Anne, where where are you on this one?
Um, I support sending it up to the board because I think um. The intentions don't necessarily match, like with the map Carbondale, you know, it was all about infill density. But we are hitting this wall of of, you know, ADU code text amendments isn't going to do it. Um, and I think it is a bigger issue. I'd I'd like to know if things changed between, you know, two thousand eight and today. Um, I'd like to see what the Historic Preservation Committee has to say, because I know that they were discussing that. Um, so I would support um, it being in a future discussion without doing the bonus. Um, because that will get abused. Um. And I I don't know why they split it off. I I thought it had to do more with preservation, but. It is kind of odd that the percentage is different for lock coverage.
Okay, thanks. Jesse, how about you?
Um, yeah, so Kenny, John, I think both of you had some really good, strong talking points, and what I heard. I took some notes here that I think you guys are trying to move in the direction of clarity. Um, and fairness for all folks across all zones is what I understood from what you guys put out. Um. However, because of the, and and it does, you know, I I see both sides of this argument, um, where. Increased housing provides more opportunities for folks to get their their foot in the door within the town of Carbondale. Um, however, I think, you know, I want to be cautious to uh, my fellow commissioners that if we were to take this on, this could be perceived as. Zoning creep, um, not allowing, like Jared said, to. Uh, let the rest of the public fully engage in the conversation between why OTR was zoned as OTR versus the different districts. Um, and and the other side of that too is, um, you know, increased density and infill can lead to increased neighbor impacts. Such as noise, reduced privacy, um, parking impacts that a future owner like Jared mentioned may not be willing to. Kind of be uh, comfortable with and had they known, um, that's what they were getting into. Um, and so I want to be fair of the process, and I would make the recommendation that we mention it, uh, like you said, Nick, put a note in there to the. BOT, however, um, I I don't think at this time it's appropriate to group it into the ADU. Um, code text amendments, because it could be interpreted as zoning creep. For for the zones already existing in Carbondale.
More? Yeah, I do think it should be a comment. Um, I know you asked for, you know. Like worst case scenarios, best case scenarios and things like that. I I think regardless of zone district, if you're hitting your allowed. Square footages of impervious or ADU size or whatever. Uh, that ADU could be a second living room for all we know, regardless of what our. Code says or whatever exemptions or bonuses or things that we're doing, just the size of it is what is scaled. And so to me, doesn't really matter, uh. How we regulate it or deregulate it, um, I do think it's a important conversation that we should have. Uh, separate to ADUs though.
Okay, great. Kim, you're the only one, you got some, got some wisdom for us?
Well, um, I'm not so sure about that, but um, first of all, I absolutely hear what staff is saying. That we're trying to do simple and not create all these new exemptions that would be provided. Through ADU exemptions, um, so I hear that overall. I think it's a shame that we've spent so much time on this and that we went so deep on it in the last meeting. If it's not appropriate to be talking about it yet, so um, I get it. And I I hear the direction that we're going, that that we don't need to dive so deep into this. Pervious, impervious yet, and I'm on board. Um, it's just too bad that we went so deep on it before. You know, if we're not, if it's not good, and I understand that the town needs to be noticed and and I completely understand that, so. Let's move on.
Great. Well, I mean, and and I I uh, yeah, it 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 might feel it, you know, on on some level that that there was like time wasted or something like that. I I want to kind of say, just nothing else, Kim can feel better, uh, that. That i- i- it, I appreciate that that we identified it, right? Um, and that there was discussion, that it was thoughtful, that we had this moment um, to look at it by by. Engaging in that discussion as a group and in hearing the comments that have that have come in, it brings a new element to light. It's 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 not within our purview now or our ability to make any decision on that, as as we've heard. But it does put it into kind of into the process, and it allows it to the the BOT to see it. If they choose as a as a group to go back and look at some of these minutes because of the flag we put on this topic. Um, there are, you know, they they can be educated and they can kind of learn from that conversation, Kim. So I I think there is value in it, um, as far as when that value turn, you know. How that value kind of gets applied or realized, I think that is to be determined. But um, at least we've we've, you know, something, something has, I I think, been initiated by the conversation. So, um, with that, I'd love to move on. If everybody, uh, thank you all for weighing in on that. Any closing comments there? Are we all good? Good, good, good. Okay, right on.
Are we thinking about removing then uh, that exemption?
Be one exception.
No.
Fr- Franco, no, that the staff recommendation was maybe to uh, consider tightening it up slightly. So that the square footage more matches the square footage of two parking spaces and some. Walkways from a parking space, so but but it wouldn't, it's, we're not proposing to remove that exemption. That's a parking related conversation.
Right, and so I think what we will have as a commission, when it comes back to that item, is does this commission feel that. The reduction of that space is is makes sense, or do we still feel that the 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 sum total of the. Parking spaces plus the access is makes the uh. The current code item, the 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 current uh, viable, so that's that's what it'll it'll come back to. Um, at the next session when we um, get the recommendation, uh, recommended code text updates from staff. Is that clear, Mud?
Crystal clear, Mud.
Cool. Attached first, detached?
Thank you.
Yeah.
So.
I could've sworn we already talked about this like before.
I was, I kind of froze too, because I'm I'm wondering what we need to.
I I thought I heard, but I was looking back through minutes and I didn't get definitive, yes, 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 from everybody, so. Um, like you guys voted on some of the other ones, so that's why I left it on here, but I figured it's probably about a thirty seven second discussion.
All right, time us, uh, I think into John's point, for every zone district, they should be the same, I guess, as far as that's concerned, so attached, detached for.
Allow OTR. Allow all.
Yeah, we, I think we already said that.
Twenty seven seconds remaining.
Can I get a head nod from those online? Are you open to attach, detached to all zone districts? I got thumb and nod, good. Is anybody against this?
No.
Jesse, we are the. Yeah, you're good. Okay, yeah.
That sounds good, thank you.
Yes.
Actually, you're you're within.
We are blazing out tonight, folks. Um, okay, so the last item is the DRP Development Review Process. My notes have us, um, eh, out of alignment with staff on this one. Uh, I I staff kind of has has identified kind of what is the easiest or the smoothest options. And by and large, I think what I have heard from this commission is leaning toward option D, some level of a tiered option, um, at this point. Um, the 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 pro con of the tiered option, as I understand it, is on one hand, it allows to uh, this community to kind of ease in to um, what the development review process is. So on some levels, it becomes a little bit easier. Uh, i.e. an administrative review, that is staff, and at some levels, it is slightly more complex. Now, and clearly, that that the kind of the con of that is it's not the easiest. There is more complexity, because it isn't just a one size fits all. Um, an example of that that we've used in previous conversations about this is, for example, if it's an interior ADU that does not change square footage and um, therefore impacts outside of the existing structure, that would be a very easy opportunity for it to be an administrative staff-led and owned process. However, if we were talking about an ADU that is trying to maximize, um, or I'm sorry, a homeowner who's trying to maximize their ADU potential, um, specifically bedroom counts being a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom is is the note that I have here. Um, you all had wanted that to be um, a review that would come through this commission. So that's just one example. I think there are, uh, there are others such as size, such as design standards um, as well, that 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 could play into this. Um, I am not pushing in either way, this time I'm just a a little bit of a reminder as to previous discussions on this topic. Who would like to uh, kind of lead in or kind of build on? Or refute any of those ideas or kind of make make some points on the topic of the Designer View Process for ADUs? Don't all jump, but hey Cindy, how you feeling? Great.
Okay, so you've got A, B, C, D, and E. Are we trying to mull through, pick one, or do you want us to? I mean, this is too complicated, I think. It's so. Are we trying to pick the one that fits the best and is the simplest and we think would work the best?
Cindy, if I may, I I believe, um, I read further down, uh, Town Staff Recommended A, B, C, and E.
Okay.
Um, as potential
Yep.
options for us to look at, ruling out option D, is that?
Well, they don't rule out anything, they're making recommendations. What this commission is moving forward to is option D, for better or for worse.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
So, over the recent meetings, what you all have been saying is that both specifically on the topics
And.
And then when it came to this item, that there was varying levels of review wanted or comfort in less review. That is more difficult for staff, and in some level, it can be more difficult or confusing for homeowners as well. They would have to learn the thresholds and there would have to be an understanding of, okay, I'm doing one bedroom. That means I have an administrative review, or I'm going with two bedrooms. That means I would have to go through a um, either a notice process and and or a P and Z review. So it 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 does get more complicated, um, by going with a tiered option. But for better or for worse, that was what you all were saying at the, both the intervals or the subtopics as well as when we discussed it or began discussing this specifically last session. Um, I think something that I would add in, which I think I've made kind of clear in my stance, is the idea of easing our way in kind of comes back at this point. Um, I'm not gonna specifically say, you know, what that looks like, but as far as going full on in anything. Um, I continue to, I think, appreciate the idea of looking at this process not as an attempt to hit a bullseye on the first row, but we get a chance to examine it and test it out. If it becomes, if it's one thing or the other, um, it it it's always easier to open things up further than it is to close things down. So just as a reminder about that.
Yeah, I, Nick, Nick hit it on nail on the head. Um, our goal with this was to kind of offer up different pathways and just to get juices flowing from the P and Z. Um, and so we kind of took it from, you know, tried to take it from least amount of process to kind of most amount of process, and then I threw an E there at the end, which is not the most amount of process, but but to Nick's point, D, that was really intended to capture what I felt we heard from the P and Z during all the other discussions about, well, gosh, maybe this should come up to us. Maybe this is that threshold that should come for a public review as opposed to a staff review. And so that was what E was really, or D was really intended. Um, and e- exactly what Nick said, you know, the the reason we're not recommending that is really, it's complex. It's harder to understand, as John kind of pointed out in his public comments. It might be hard for for John Q Public to kind of read, understand and know what they need to do. Um, could not be, but you know, that was kind of some of the reasons why we weren't recommending it. But it it's it's certainly a pathway. The specific numbers, I don't think we have to live by those. If eight fifty isn't the right number and it's a thousand or six fifty or whatever, like you guys can talk about those, but it's really just kind of getting the juices flowing. Does just go straight to a building permit for everything? Or everything goes to a public hearing or something in between, wha- what feels right for the commission? So, yeah.
Thank you, Jared.
And I think, sorry. I think what I heard last time is you guys, like kind of what Jared said, like making it harder was that informing the neighbors process. And I think what you guys kind of landed on was the tiered option, but just two, just staff level or you guys.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Right. Yeah, that's a reminder, Ali, because what you, what what if I, and if if I'm remembering correctly, what would be allowed in that is there is the idea that if there was a, uh, some level of conflict at the neighborhood or neighbor level, that would bump things up into
Yes.
out of administrative into P and Z. Is that, if I'm remembering correct there? If it needs some refinement, please clean it up for me.
I think it was mostly just these tiers in the inform neighbors would get bumped up to the staff review. So if it was more than one bedroom, larger than eight fifty, um, you know, or any of these other things you guys discussed, as like having bigger impacts to the neighborhood, then it would come up to you guys. Yes.
Okay.
I just, I would like some clarification, Jared, from if somebody were to develop an ADU on their property, what all is required as far as documentation and potential stamps for that? Do you, can anybody submit that, or do you need an architectural stamp? Um, shade studies?
Um, it 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 depends.
Yeah.
Um, technically, yes, every project needs a shade study. However, um, staff has kind of waived that um, requirement if it's a one-story building that's less than sixteen feet in height, it's really hard to create a shade.
Yeah.
That's over sixteen feet on the neighboring property. Um, but what we do require with pretty much every application is a site plan, floor plans, elevations, um, demonstration of building height compliance, lot coverage compliance, things along those lines, and so, um, an ADU would be no different, you know. We could waive certain ones of those, depending on the situation. For example, if it's a, I'm just remodeling my basement and adding an ADU there, we might not require elevations. Um, it might just be a site plan, floor plan. If it's a second story addition, we might not require lot coverage requirement, you know, compliance, but we might hit a a shade analysis, and so. Um, as far as whether we require architect stamps or not, um, I don't believe the building department requires an architect stamped for every building permit. Um, we do require structural elements to be stamped by a structural engineer. But um, I think, you know, drafts people or homeowners who are adept can can draw up building plans and get those approved in certain situations.
See, um, yeah, I'm trying to, I guess the point of my question was more of, like if somebody, uh, let's just use John as an example here. Um, I don't know your career, so please forgive me if I'm being mean.
Paul Smith is an example.
Paul Smith, let's say Paul Smith wants to add an ADU. Um, I guess they're gonna have to look at code, or they're gonna likely have to go to a professional who knows how to read the code and understand it and digest it. So to me, I don't know if the simplification of like the wordage is really all that necessary for us. I think it's pretty easy, and then, yeah, simplifying is great. Of like, if it crosses this plane or fits this size or has this many bedrooms, I think that's super easy, but there are still technical documents that are required from a professional. Or somebody who will have a lot of time on YouTube figuring out how to use these programs. But regardless, I I think you're gonna have to have a professional involved in some aspect in order for a permit to be issued. So I don't, I'm not sure if I'm really concerned about oversimplification of this.
Or you are willing and, I mean, I know you're making a joke, but or you're willing to do the work, get educated enough to understand the process.
Exactly.
And therefore, I think, carry a certain amount of um, either uh, knowledge or intelligence to be able to decipher um, the the code and the processes as part of, as part of this.
Right.
Um, as I mean, honestly, I think, on the negative, I mean, staff will probably get some folks who come in with their hands up, like, tell me what to do, which I'm sure that never happens.
Even as a professional, I do that.
Right. I never do, Jared. So, you know, that's going to be a a a reality that we're putting on staff.
Yeah.
Right, um. I think the hope is, however, that folks are going to, there's gonna be that informational thing, and that's, and and staff are here to help, you know, that is as part of their role too. Um, as 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 town staff, so I I think it's, that's to some degree, okay, if that's too bold to say, uh.
That that's why we exist, among other reasons, but I mean, to help and explain and interpret these codes, and so. Um, you know, I think the challenge, if we go with the tiered is, is on us to write it as plainly as possible so that more people can understand it. Um, but if if the tiered approach is something that this commission's really in favor of, you know, I I think it's, there's value to it and there's value to us kind of helping navigate people through what they can do at a staff level, what goes up to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing.
Jared, if I may, just a question, what option is currently be being used by staff? And um, would you say that that has been the feedback typically from homeowners in the area that um, they struggle to either interpret code or meet the requirements based on current options provided?
Yes, so.
Sorry, the 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 current process is kind of similar to option C, but involves additional steps that require either a conditional or special use permit in certain zone districts. Um, so really, everything that you're looking at's slightly simplified compared to what we're currently doing. Um, but it's most similar to to option C, which is, um, I guess, shouldn't say it's most similar option C, it's 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 every, every ADU requires a pretty much a notice public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. I just reread option C and realized that wasn't what that said.
I I was gonna raise my hand in a second. So, so what D does is it loosens it to some level, results in complexity to some level. Um, but there's no, I I guess, full-on opening, uh, i- i- as far as um, say, A, right, A is like floodgates are open, it's very, very easy um, for a homeowner to move into an ADU kind of process, or you know, it it it's really just more about building permit. Of course, there's still going to be a staff process, but um, but everything, you know, they could have three bedrooms, it could be much larger than, you know, than, or it would be the the largest available with three bedrooms on the side of a house from, you know, five feet from property line or whatever to the setback. And we would still not see that, and and neither would a neighbor at that point. Yeah, you know, I, um, since we're a little quiet on this, I I don't mind sticking my neck out a little bit. To me, the idea of it, I I think I'll just kind of own it, I'm okay with a tiered option. Um, again, no offense to to staff, I don't mean to make things more difficult for anybody. Um, but it allows us to kind of look at what's provided from the complexity. In my mind, and I would love to hear back if if staff disagrees with this, or if you all disagree with this, is we get to hear back number one, it works or doesn't work in 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 some way, and two, that if it's these four items that we agree on as a commission or a a different set, that some of those work better than others. There's almost like a metric, like we we get some metrics, some success fail metrics that come from the process. So we can say, oh, we're learning, right, like we've, as a community, as a as a staff, we get to take away something over time, because of it, there's a learning curve in place, that maybe it, certain things can be lice looser. And then maybe we need to add like a number five that says something else, that that would be otherwise, you know, u- unknown. Um, as in, a lot of things are coming up to us as a commission, and we're like, man, that that, it doesn't need to be here. Staff can really just be handling this one, so let's put it in there. So that's what I like. I I like the education process that happens, I think, with something new like this. There is a value in, in kind of like test driving it a little bit. So, sorry to put my opinion out there first, I'm just, you know, since no one else is jumping out, I thought I just kind of uh, grease the skids a little bit. Does anybody counter that? I mean, please feel free to, like, if if you disagree with that, or if you find, um, if you wanna kind of like poke at that idea. Poke at that idea a little bit without, by all means. Yeah, Anne.
I'm struggling with. The noticing requirements. I don't. See a problem with no exterior modifications actually going straight to permit. I think that would get our bandits taken care of perhaps. And get the public renting them safe. And then I think when we get into public noticing. The whole, like, if there's a complaint, we go to public notice. No, either we public notice. Or we don't. And what is that threshold? I don't think there's. That we should create a new process to review ADUs. And I think the triggers. Are good. They are complex.
By triggers, do you mean?
The size, height. You know, where it sits on a lot. I don't necessarily mind those triggers for it going to a public hearing. But I think, you know, if we're going to notice the neighbors, then they are entitled to a public hearing. Versus notice the neighbors and see if anybody complains and then we think about it. So I would support defining the thresholds. For a public hearing process. In terms of site plan review without public notice, I'd be okay with. A smaller ADU falling under that, like maybe something under six hundred square foot, site plan review, good to go. But I do worry about building heights with that. So I'm a little torn on. A way to do that easily, which I think we get back into. The tiered review criteria.
Yeah, I mean, what I, what I'm hearing from you, we're still in tiered review.
I think so.
What you're being helped, like I think what you're helping with is. I, I hear that you are beginning to share what sounds comfortable as the thresholds. For the tiers and the different elements, which is.
Correct. But I don't, I don't think there should be. You know, this strange public notice with discussion or discussion with staff to see if it goes to. You know, a public hearing. Which is what, like, because it says inform neighbors through notice for ADUs with limited impact, complaints would require a public hearing. You know, either, either it's if you meet all these requirements, then you're good to go with slight panel review. You know, or if you're not, it's public hearing. I, I don't like the idea of. Seeing if a neighbor steps up to challenge it. I, I think that's difficult and unclear. And someone in town will make it their personal hobby. To fight against any ADU, you know, that, that has a complaint threshold.
It's a good point. On, on that one, you know, I, I think nimbyism is, is real and I, I, I don't doubt that that on some level. You know, as our, as our.
I haven't heard that term in a while.
As our town grows and folks, some folks will inherently be uncomfortable with that change. And so I, I think it's, it's a, your point is taken. To play my usual game. There will be, there, there, folks will realize exactly what the threshold is. And there will be, you know, that, that can also be the other side of the coin. One square foot less. I'd exactly aligning it out to, to be something where not, where. They're in a situation where they know their neighbor does not like them, or again, I'm creating a story here. Do you like my story? You're, you're, keep going. You're knocking it out of the park. I was in baseball, but. I don't play baseball. They're, it, it's like everything else, the system will be gamed, right? And, and, and so. Point made, I guess.
I, I think kind of a, along with where Nick was going, people building right up to the limit. One, one challenge I have, and I think it's worth this group talking about if we're going with this tiered system is. Tying it to the number of bedrooms is inherently challenging. Just because. What is a bedroom is kind of what the architect says is a bedroom. And so we'll likely get, you know. Offices or. Storage space or things like that. That for all intensive purposes will be a bedroom and it's really a two-bedroom unit at eight hundred and fifty square feet. Or eight hundred and forty-nine square feet, and then it'll be a staff review because. They're playing the game of it's a, a one-bedroom and that kind of leads that same. Bandit situation we have now. Well, it's not a kitchen, it's a wet bar. And so, you know, if. If you're talking about what the threshold is, you know, maybe just square footage is what's appropriate. And it's a, if it's over a certain square footage and it's. Building the building taller, building the building out, taking up more of the land, maybe that's the threshold versus whether it's one or two bedrooms. I understand like. The thought of, well, two bedrooms is probably more people than one bedroom is. I think I might have written that, so I, I understand it, but you know, thinking about kind of how people are gonna. You know, find those loopholes. That's probably one, so worth conversation.
And, and great kind of reminder. Thanks, Jared. And, and I. I think it's also like, you know, what are those things that are? I like this shift in perspective to, to not, what can be kind of like morphed or played, but more like objective. A building height, you know, the, the build, the ADU height is the ADU height. The ADU square footage is the ADU square footage. I think this, this is cleaner. This does get back to that original. Kind of request to. To kind of distill this down to a, a, a smoother process. So even though we are looking at. The leading to a more complex process within development review. Within that, I think we're helping it be a little, we would help it be a little easier. If we were looking at some of the simple, more measurable items that could not be like, you know. We're measuring height in feet. So you've come into centimeters, it's, it's, you, it doesn't become like an easier thing. But, you know, like, like just to the point of the bedroom or whatever. So. Maybe that first one is, you know, as far as a bedroom. I could see removing bedroom counts and going to a, a square footage. Height, I think is absolutely a reviewable thing. Not only is there a kind of thinking about impacts of sun and light and shade. But there is privacy that goes along with that as well. The location. From adjacent buildings and neighboring properties, I think that's also a clearly, it would be part of the site plan. That could be easily reviewed by staff and would be a requirement of the applicant to just clearly show. There's a scale on the page. There is a, you know, they're, they're pulling a dimension. Very straightforward. Design standards. Now, that does get subjective. That's interpretable. And we did have a discussion about this. You know, this is, this is where we get a little dangerous, because I, I think as a commission, we do have design professionals. That sit here and not that we have opinions by any means. But it, we've, we've known, I've noticed over the years where we kind of get a little bit outside of our purview. On aesthetics. It's a murky one, to say the least. Does staff have any opinions on how? We might look at design standards without wholly complicating this. Ellie, yes.
Well, you know, feel free to tell me if I'm wrong, but we would, we would wanna write if we do have more. Design standards, we'd wanna write them very specifically. And, you know, they're not objective, but try to make it so that when we're looking at it, there can be something we can clearly say, hey. This is different. We wanna bring this up to you. Yeah, with our design standard, we currently have, yeah, it's mostly just. If we think it's enough.
Right. And so you guys kind of. The reason that was in there is you guys kind of discussed design standards and I didn't really update the options from the last meeting.
Yeah.
But you know, the design standards that we're talking about are kind of what's already in some of our codes. You know, private outdoor space, bulk storage, right? And so if, if someone comes in and says. Look, we're meeting the code requirements and outdoor space and bulk storage. Does, does that just, is that part of that threshold that says, okay, you can go to staff? Well, we, we can't provide the bulk storage necessary. Does that then kick up to the P and Z to kind of say? Well, does this still work? Or does this not work? And I think that's. You know, some of those, we did put in the prior. Packet, you know, things like, do we want to consider architectural standards? And it didn't seem like there was much. Much kind of cohesion on that thought and much direction to say, we wanna go that direction. So. You know, that, that's kind of off the table, so it's more of some of those objective standards that we already have in code today. I'm just saying, these still apply to ADUs because. Back to Jared's point from when we started off, bulk storage and outdoor space speaks to livability of these units. And it's important tenant of the town that the ADUs are livable.
I'm just gonna do a quick reminder. Cindy, last time you voted for no change, no additional design standards for ADUs. That's where you said last time. Feel free to change that. I'm just, just going down the list here quickly. Kim, you voted for B. You were looking at, you, you want additional standards for ADUs. And you voted no additional standards, but you wanted to exempt, uh, storage and outdoor space. Jared, you were option B. So quite literally, we were split on the middle. I specifically remembered saying that I wasn't gonna split the tie. So I, I played Switzerland. So.
Twice.
Was that?
Although twice.
You don't get my vote.
May, may I ask a clear, clarifying question?
Or you could be willing to break the tie, Franco.
Well. I just, I think I voted no changes to the design standards, because. We have design standards that are residential in character and we're calling. Accessory dwelling unit, a residential unit. So to go, I guess. Above and beyond our existing residential design standards. This kind of, for me, makes this into the same playing field of, we're gonna change the impervious lot coverage based on. This ADU ordinance, this, this rezoning, this, this land use code amendment. You know, how many avenues, you know, you know, down do we wanna go where we could say we could change this? But we can't change this. We could change impervious law covers because ADUs. You know, we're making this exemption, but now we wanna change the design standards because. ADUs require this sort of functionality. I think in my mind, it's just, you know, we're talking more simple than, than maintain the existing. Residential design standards and maybe another time we go and we notice and update our design standards. For. You know, our residential neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well said. And you're voting A on top of it?
For. The options.
Yes. I, I don't think you were here actually, so I don't think you voted the, the, the night we discussed this one.
Okay. I think, I think it was.
She wouldn't give a vote.
Oh, yeah, you didn't give a vote. Okay. What's that?
You just voted.
So, so right now as a commission, we are leaning toward no change on design standards, which would then follow. Or to your point, Ellie, we would kind of, you know, reference back to existing where we're at for, for. Single-family residential or, or whatever zone district it is, design centers. Additional notes I had here are. A ten percent exemption for bulk storage or just a flat thirty square feet available. I don't, just in my notes, so wanted to put that out. There was some discussion around bulk storage, a, a recognition that we are a toy-heavy community. Or a crap-heavy culture, however you wanna say that. But. As far as the percentage. Just on that one, it's easy for me. I'd rather see like, just like a set number, thirty square feet than a percentage. That, that's, that is always easier in my mind when I'm doing applications or things. And I imagine it'd be easier for staff if this commission feels that a, some level of bonus for bulk storage. Is a. An interest. To you all, yes.
Yes.
I got a yes from Jared, I got a yes from Cindy.
Yes.
And I think you were.
Yeah, I was.
On it.
Yeah, cuz, um, cuz we were offering that to be exempt from the square footage calculation.
Yeah, and I think thirty square feet was what we came to. So are you all yeses to the standard, a standard number versus a percentage? Or are you just a yes to the idea of an exemption for bulk storage? Just to, so as I, so we can get kind of everybody's take, hot take on that.
Not sold on the number. I guess we could stick to a, a number, but I am, I would like bulk storage.
Let's, let's start and see if, if we would all like. To be a yes to the bulk storage exemption. And then from there, we can kind of come back and see what, how to do that. Because if there's not a majority that wants it, then we're not gonna waste the time for it.
Sure.
Fair. So I got a yes. Jesse, where are you on exemption for bulk storage?
Um, I would say, yeah, I would.
Okay. And you're a yes. Cindy, you're a yes. Kim is a yes. Franco is a yes. Okay, so majority is down for a bulk storage exemption. So I'm gonna look over at staff. Have we gotten, we've gotten messy here.
We'll, we'll come back with some, some options and further discussions of that.
Okay.
I think it kind of goes into that other development bonus conversation of. Where is it? How is it? Is it treated differently? If bulk storage is internal to the unit. It, that's challenging. Bulk storage is exterior ground floor level. Next to a garage, that could be a different situation.
And I, and I remember specifically, that's what I was saying. When we were discussing this, was it, it was an exterior, I think, and you had a, a memory, was it, or? Or was it you said, someone, I, I was one of you that had a, had a memory of an old house?
I had a rental that had the exterior. Storage, like under the eaves, which is great, and it can't be used for another purpose.
And that's where I, I see it as well. So I, I wasn't trying to complicate things.
So I think we can come back with some, something more for you all to react. I think I've heard some. Some information. I think we can kind of look at where our codes at regarding bulk storage and come back with something that might make sense.
Okay, great. Thanks. So I'm just gonna reel us back in. Now we are talking about design standards, bulk storage. We've got a, we've got a check there. Jared and Ellie are on it. I think we are leaning as a commission to. To the no change, option A. Kim or Jared, I wanna respect you guys being on additional standards. You wanna speak to that at all? Either of you, maybe both of you?
Additional standards?
Yeah. So option B was additional centers, additional clarification of, additional clarification of existing standards and minor additional centers as follows. Require architectural compatibility with primary structure through the use of two or more characteristics. Examples being building massing, exterior materials, exterior colors, roof forms. That's number one. So basically, it's, it's what that, that's saying is that. Here are five, pick three, pick two kind of thing. You gotta have some level of cohesion between existing structure and ADU. This of course would not apply to an interior ADU. Next bullet is require private outdoor space in alignment with the UDC. This one, there was, I, I think, good discussion on it in, on, on one hand, the idea of livability and quality of life. For whoever's living in the ADU to have that space. The flip side was it increases the onus of, of the, the owner to invest more money. And it's more review for staff to have this outdoor space requirement in the mix. And then last, we're bulk storage, we've already gone through that one. So I think. The two we have is like this idea of like aesthetic compatibility. So some, some. Amount of. Defining, I think Seth has done a great job here of, of like some, some top level items. Do you pick two of those? Do you pick three of those? Um. And then private outdoor space, uh. Please, guys, share what your, your, your thoughts on this. And if, if you're, you're still. Into this, I think we need to hear that from you.
I'll go first, Kim. Um, I don't, I don't think they should be requirements. Again, I think what we digressed from. In our previous meeting was that these would just be. Additional exemptions should someone seek to. I don't think you should. Require anybody to build a patio of an ADU in your backyard. That's, I think, a privacy concern. And to make that a requirement would be a pretty big overreach.
Got it.
And bulk storage, again, um. As much as I advocate for it, as much as I push people to include that, uh, as far as a requirement, no, uh, as. A square footage exemption, uh, we cannot. Exempt impervious square foot or impervious coverage. So this would have to be, uh. Like, let's say you're meeting your. Your lot coverage, but you're maximized on your. Um, ADU size, but you wanna build it bigger. You would be able to build these things, right? And these would count. Not towards your square footage, but against your impervious. Cuz again, we cannot talk about. Impervious coverage. So to me, again, I think I've repeated.
These are landscape elements you're talking about now, right?
Well, bulk storage exterior, yeah.
Does that count against impervious?
Well, so landscape, when, so is it, is it either a patio? Or an overhang counts against impervious currently? Is it, can you remind me of the specifics, Jared?
Yep, so our current um, lot coverage requirements would require a. Deck or patio impervious to. Water to be counted as impervious lot coverage. However, say a wood deck. With grass underneath would not count towards impervious lot coverage. And then, yes, bulk storage would count because it would be an enclosed space. More likely than not, covered space, something like that. I doubt you're gonna see a lot of bulk storages that are just a. Wire cage in the middle of a backyard.
Uh, the example that I brought up last time was I had a home where it was. A rather, it was elevated off the ground by a couple feet, and it was two feet deep by like ten feet long. So that would not count.
Against it. If it was like underneath the existing.
No, it was on the wall of the home.
It's hanging.
But if it's, but if it's creating more. Building that is impervious to the. Ground than the footprint of the building.
It doesn't touch the ground.
No footprint.
It'd be essentially like screwing a, a, a locker to a wall.
Yeah, it's, it's, it was an elevated kind of like gear locker, essentially.
Yeah, we, we probably wouldn't. Count that towards impervious lot coverage. Um. You know, generally be, we, we hit structure. So if it's a, a built kind of. Storage shed or storage room.
Yeah.
Yes, but if it's like a, a metal. Yeah, locker screwed onto the side of a building, we, we. Probably wouldn't even know it's there.
Right.
Um.
Yesterday, it's my, it was a bit more artful than that. Part of the, the building, but um, anyways, we, let's, let's not get like down rabbit hole on that. Um. So reeling it in, I, I guess. I wouldn't want, if, if a homeowner was willing to. Enhance. The exterior space. For an ADU resident. In terms of a hardscape patio. That was impervious. I wouldn't want that to count against them.
Yeah.
You know, um, however, if they were like, we're going to concrete our entire backyard for this ADU. Which is again, the game, you know, play in the game. Well, that wouldn't be cool either, right?
To play devil's advocate, what's stopping someone from saying, I'm gonna have an extra large concrete patio? And I'm just gonna say, well, this is for my ADU.
I, I just.
I, I, I think you. You know, we already provide a patio exemption within our impervious lot coverage regulations. And so there's nothing saying that a, uh. A, uh, property owner can't. Utilize that exemption for their lot coverage. There's nothing saying that they can't build a. Um, drip through deck for a, uh. ADU, I think, you know, you leave a lot of loopholes open if you're saying, well, if you just call this patio part of the ADU, it's completely exempt from. Lot coverage. It's a pretty, it's a pretty hard thing for, for the town staff to kind of. Um, regulate and enforce. And so. People would just say, oh yeah, that's my ADU patio. That's off my existing patio. Just food for thought.
Yeah.
Uh, Franco. Yeah, could I keep on going back to that code section three point eight point five for previous lot coverage this evening? And, uh, you know, as Jared said, there are. These bonuses or exemptions that are existing within the land use code. Uh, letter F, letter G, letter H. That are already baked in. So, you know, to say. You know, if someone's creating a patio that is of a, a perv- pervious surface, um. You know, that, that's, that's ten percent right there. Jared, I don't know if you could. You know, add them all up, you know, letter F, you get ten percent bonus. Um, or ten percent of the square footage of the floor you have a dwelling in it. But it's already, it's already in the code, so. You know, do you will with what's there, is my opinion.
I'm not, I'm not, uh, was there a point in there? Um, so, so what you're saying?
Those exemptions.
So you just wanna leave it as it is?
It is, we already provide a patio exemption.
Yeah.
If you wanna use that for your ADU, if you wanna use that for your primary home, if it's just. Patio space in general on your property. It exists. That's up to you, the homeowner, decide how best to use it.
Great.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, sorry, I, I, I lost focus there for a second.
Um, I mean, also like. Realistically, you don't, you can have somebody come and install a patio. After, so.
Yes, I was gonna say, I, I.
I've never done that.
They have a neighbor in my, I may remember I have a neighbor in my neighborhood now who's, who's, who's doing the same thing, so.
I could install it myself. I don't even need a professional.
Right, moving on. Uh, okay, Kim, please. Drop some pearls.
Uh, not sure about that, but um, to me. More important than private outdoor space. Or even bulk storage is still the compatibility piece, the appearance. Of what it is they're building. So I still like that.
Yeah.
Piece that we talked about before.
Yeah. And, and, and I think that's really, I, I appreciate like the simplicity and like the kind of the honesty of your statement there. Cuz yeah, I mean. To some degree, I. And, and, and I don't have in front of me right now, but our existing standards are somewhat general. So that puts a lot on staff to interpret, um. Alignment. Um. So yeah, I, I hear you, Kim. I, I don't know. How to reconcile that. I, I, what I noticed is that by and largest commission is kind of. Leaning toward no change. Um, which. Is both simple, but still putting a lot on staff. It, it's, you know, a good, a bit of a catch twenty-two on, on that. Um.
But isn't, it couldn't, at any point, staff can say. This should go to P D, P and Z. It could be over the height or the. Paint or whatever. At any point, staff can say. I wanna run this by P and Z because of. The con- conforming to de- design standards.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So that gives us a pretty big window.
Traditionally. You are your department more conservatively than not on these type, these topics.
I send everything to P, no, um, no, I mean, I think if it's something that I, I think I've heard the P and Z. Express concerns about, then, you know, I'm gonna give the P and Z the opportunity to weigh in. Um. You know, we're not gonna just send, um. Everything up that isn't architecturally identical to the primary building, but. It just a complete hypothetical if, uh, if you have a craftsman home and you're building a container. Uh, ADU in the backyard. Yeah, we, we might say, you know, that's, that's worth a planning zoning commission review. Um, but I don't think we're gonna. You know, go to the extent of, well, your primary home's purple. And this is lilac, so we, we need, we need P and Z to weigh in on that. Um, if that, if that helps.
Yeah.
Not to say that I know of any purple homes and, or lilac homes in Carbondale.
The abuse. Can commissioners protest?
You can try. Um. Kim, in, in your mind, I mean. I, I, I think bluntly. This comes from a, like, it's like a, a, a concern based response, right? Like, like there's a fear on some level that, that someone would come out with a, calling a. You know, a cardboard box and ADU, um. Is there something that where you think, is there, is there a loophole or a threshold in between? How staff would see this and how you would like it to be seen that you can identify? And I don't mean to pick on you, I, I do, I think this is.
No, no, I, I mean, I, I don't know how to answer that, um, and I'm not trying to make things more complicated, um. And maybe I am, um. I just think we still need to keep in mind what the town looks like. You know, as well as we can, um. You know, cuz again, like you said, someone could have a box that's an ADU, but. I don't, I don't know how to answer your question, really.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough one. And I, I, that's why it was, you know, maybe I'm not being articulate enough here, um, cuz I, I, I do. Both trust staff and, and their review, you know, of it. I, I think that, that, that. There's a confidence there and, um. I, I think I wanted to respect if, if there is some level of concern over. Maybe something that could be simply stated, um. You have a concern over kind of, 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 I'm just pulling something out of, out of the list here, like of, of, of roof. Um, roof forms. And you're like, I, yeah. I, I, I think that's something that, that needs to come here. I, I, that's what I was wanting. I was fishing, I guess, to see if you had a specific area of concern. That was either stylistically a mismatch, materials, or, or something that could be easily pointed at. But if, but if, if it can't, then I think we probably need to. Trust staff.
Yeah, I agree.
One. And.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Unless staff has really bad taste.
Well.
Yes.
They are planners, uh. Um, I, I, it, it feels like him, unless there's something specific that you can point at, and in no disrespect, um, that we go with, that we kind of stick with. Um, option A at this time. Um, you will have a second crack at it if you choose to attend in person. Um.
Seriously?
At the next, the next meeting.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with going with A. I, I see your point.
Please, please sleep on it. And you know, if, 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 if there is a more of a pointed, uh, I think item. Then we can, we can look at that, but I, it seems like there's some direction here now. Um. We are nine minutes ahead of schedule, folks. Uh, that's kind of impressive. Um. As I see it. We have answered the charge for this evening. Um, with the exception of, sorry, I, I spoke a little bit too, too soon. Do we need more? Information around the tiering, or are you? Do you have adequate information to kind of come back?
No, I, I think I have some adequate information and we can bring some, um. A, a more kind of thoughtful option back to you guys.
Okay.
Um. Just summarizing what I heard, I think I heard loud and clear that the informed neighbors isn't something that the P and Z's. Supportive of, and it's either staff review or full public hearing. Um, there might be some concern with eight hundred and fifty square feet. Maybe it's something a bit smaller. Um. But other than that, the first three options about proximity to property lines. Um, exceeding existing height and square footage are kind of the, the. Three items that you want objectively to be that threshold for a P and Z review.
I think that works. I, I do wanna check in on, on the, the, uh, idea of the, the public hearing or the, the neighbor comment. I think I heard like. To me, that was mostly, and. Do you all agree with that? The idea of. Of not allowing kind of, uh, ha- having, you know, if it meets administrative review. It does not, neighbors do not need to be identified at that point.
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Can I, can I see a head nod? So I have all four here. Franco, Kim, I, I see a thumbs up from Kim. Franco's.
Did you say if it does not need exterior? Modifications?
If, if it meets the other criteria for an administrative review. The homeowner would not need to notice public.
So staff can review, we don't need to tell.
Mm-hmm. So if staff gets to review it, it falls under the, it falls within the tiered. Kind of thresholds that, that, that Jared and Ellie are gonna kind of come back to us with. And they, the homeowner meets those requirements. There would be no public notice and no neighbor. No neighbor notice, essentially. Um, the only way neighbors in the public would be noticed or know that this is moving forward is if it's outside of the bounds of the. Of the thresholds to be discussed and confirmed upon review next meeting.
Okay. Thanks.
You good? Yeah, okay, great. Okay, good. Um, well, then I think. High five all around. Good work, everybody. Um, we climbed the mountain on that one, um. So next up's on that, uh, Jared, Ellie will go back and kind of package this up for us. Um, wanna urge you all to read that next packet very carefully. That's gonna really be the marching orders. Um, and so please come prepared, um. With questions, comments, and recommendations. If you see that as something that, that's, that you wanna see a shift on. Um, I, I think that that's, it's gonna be a, a. The effort, the, you know, your last opportunity is a commission, our last opportunity. Um, before sending it up to P and Z will be next meeting.
So.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you for the correction on that.
December.
Yep, so we, we are recommending continuing this to January eighth, so we have time to review it.
Yeah.
Um, write it. Get at least an initial pass from our town attorney to make sure we're not writing something that is hogwash or. Which Jared's term?
Argle bargle.
Argle bargle.
Argle bargle.
Cuz our, our next meeting is on the fourth. Eleven, thank you, yes. I don't know why I was saying, oh. Um. Right, okay, cool.
So if that's comfortable with you, we, we would like a motion to continue.
Public hearing to that date. January.
Motion to continue the public hearing for amendment to the. You know, wait, do I, yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure cuz we were moving it. Um, motion to continue the public hearing for amendment to the UDC for the purposes of reviewing regulations related to ADUs to January eighth, twenty twenty-six.
Jared and Jesse have the hot hands tonight. You guys had some red bulls, obviously.
All favor.
Um, all right, great, and vote on this. Sorry, I always wanna blow past the vote. Democracy is dead, right? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes around the room, eyes have it. All in favor. Mean to take away your voting privileges, I promise. Okay, thank you all. That was, uh, again, really, uh, kudos to everybody. Um, on that one, big lift and glad to see it come in for a landing and going up to BOT. We are three minutes ahead. Staff update.
Trap.
Draft, draft meeting, um, calendar for twenty twenty six.
Oh, shoot.
Nope, you're good, I think this is pretty quick, um, we prepared kind of a draft meeting. Calendar for next year, um, these are just the dates that the P and Z would meet, second and fourth Thursdays. Um, and then kind of what we've heard historically cancelling the meeting before Mountain Fair. Um, obviously Thanksgiving Day, and then typically the second meeting in December, which is holiday, Christmas Eve. Um, in years past, spring break meeting has been cancelled.
But spring break this year is not, does not fall on the Thursday of the P and.
Correct, correct, so we didn't include that. Um, and that was, uh, part of it, and so what we've prepared for you guys is. Um, you know, that draft meeting calendar, if that's acceptable to you all, um, that's what we can move forward with. If you guys have concerns about other meeting dates, let us know if there's some. Thing that everyone's going to on another one of those Thursdays, and we just know we won't have a quorum. That would be good to know, and then the only other item is, you know. We're, we're still struggling to get um, confirmation of attendance before the meetings, and so we'd really like to kind of renew those efforts and. Um, it'd be great if, when we send out the packet on Friday, if you guys could try to let us know whether you are or aren't gonna attend. Um, we've sent out calendar invites and emails, if there's another way, let us know, we're happy to try to accommodate, but. Um, it's just really helpful when we're working with the public on public hearings, um, that we can kind of let applicants know if. There's a quorum issue or not as soon as possible. That's it.
Awesome.
No motion needed, just information.
Great, thank you, um, I'll quickly speak to, uh, the attendance thing, I know, I don't. Respond in the way you probably want to, Kay and, and Jared Ellie, um. And I said this before, I appreciate that some folks have asked for the extra. Or the uh, many kind of reminders and invites, and for me and my calendar, I. I know if I'm, I'm always coming unless I tell otherwise, personally, just given my role on this commission. Um, I feel like I'm, I am here, unless I'm sick or I have a kid or something like that, that happens, and a kid that happens, that's really funny. Um, so that's, that's how my personal stance and because of all the invites, I find it. Easier to, to not accept them all, but I also don't want to, it's by, by not accepting them, I'm not saying no, I just don't want it to be confused. So, um, so I, I apologize if that's confusing to you all.
No, that's actually in alignment with what every other commission does is, um, you are expected to be there unless you. Inform staff that you're not gonna be there. That's how we do with the P, that's what we do with the HPC, right, John?
Yeah, to me, I mean, even though we are volunteers, we've signed up, we, we've made a commitment, and so I, I think part of that commitment is. You show up unless you have a, a, a reason otherwise, and if, if there is a reason. Let Steph know, let me know, let Jared know, you know, the, they, but I, I think that's a, kind of an, an easy way to do it, and you don't feel guilty, you just gotta, just gotta kind of raise your hand. That could make it, does that make life easier for? Okay, um, I, I just wanted to kind of self identify on that one. Um, I have a few, uh, quick comments, want to speak on parking, so, um, we did shift things, you probably saw my email today. Uh, I, I've, I'm, I'm glad that we've kind of, we've done this, so, um. We've got, we've got some good things done tonight, so we will be kind of moving into parking as the next. Option or next, I'm sorry, uh, next task from, from BOT. Um, and that will begin on, um, the eleventh. Uh, I have confirmed that Vanessa Solisby from Dixon Resources Unlimited, they are a, they are parking super geeks. Uh, and I think I've been kind of open, I've, I've had the opportunity to work with, um, her in the past and just was blown away by her, her knowledge. And so I, I, I reached out to her and she said she is willing, and I, and you all were interested in having that, um, having her join, she can join, um, at eight fifteen. Her kids have a school play earlier, so I don't know, you know, uh, Christmas, school plays, I, I am not gonna stick a stick in those folks. So, just want to check in to see if, if that timing works for us, um, I don't know what else is on the agenda for that, or potentially on the agenda. If there is anything on the agenda other than this item, I.
Think that's it. So we could have just a later start to the meeting, eight fifteen, but I, you know, ask that it's still wrapped up by nine, which is kind of the standard.
Yep, so what I.
Seven to nine.
Right.
Meeting time that we have.
Yep, I think it's fair, so I mean, we, I would, I would propose then starting maybe half an hour late. To give us time as a commission to kind of. Get familiar, refamiliarized with the challenge and the task. Um, and get our kind of, our heads around it for a little bit, um, and then at, at, at eight fifteen, um. Uh, Vanessa can join us and then kind of provide some kind of outside or kind of like a national perspective, um, and again, they, they do a lot of, of, they do. Work everywhere, they do a lot of work in mountain and resort communities, why I found like specifically like of, of some value there. Um, that's option one, and I guess I wanted to put out an option two. Um, because of the timing, just being realistic, um, and knowing that this haven't be your always a ton of crunchy. We could push this off, and it could go into our January meeting, and we could, uh, choose to. Um, check me if I'm, if I'm overstepping here, but we could cancel the December meeting on the eleventh. And just push this and know that it would be, I, I think. Um, I just want to confirm here quickly, I believe. Would it be the twenty second?
The twenty third.
No, it would be likely January twenty second, not December.
Okay.
Yeah, um, just, I, I assume ADU regulations are gonna consume.
Yeah.
Majority of the January eighth meeting.
Oh, yeah, fair, right.
So, and either.
We're not gonna get through all of it, could front load the parking and then talk about ADU after, that way we could get her on board and moved.
I, we could, I, I would say the public has had an interest in ADU regulations, and I'd hate to. Unduly delay their opportunity to kind of comment, but um. E- e- either way is fine.
Any opinions on this, so again, two options that are in front of you, I guess there's, there's three technically, there is a late start on December eleventh. And that is wholly, wholly focused on, um, kind of an in- introduction to our parking update process. Option B is to push it to January twenty second, where there would, there may be something else, but at that point, ADUs would be done. And um. We could, um, I have to confirm her availability still on that, but, um, that, that, that could be a, a kind of a less. Challenge or kind of less scheduling challenges there, or we could look at option C. Which to Jared's point, um, might be a little bit tight, but to kind of squeeze it in with the closeout of the ADU discussion.
I think we do it for January twenty second, uh, trying to. Fit her into a time slot after like a school play of that nature. I'm not gonna guarantee that she's gonna be on time, that's just gonna push us and we're just gonna be hanging around for a while.
Yep.
I, I don't think that's, um, something that we need to really prioritize as much, I know we had goals set forth to get it in twenty twenty five.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think, uh, given holidays and things like that, I don't think it's really all that much of a miss from our targets if we push it to the twenty second of January.
Point noted, I do also want to say, even if we think, let's not organize our lives around this person, this person. Provides, I think, some value, and I, I, I like that there's a willingness to kind of, to come to this, to, to this commission and help. But this has to happen regardless, um, of if she shows up and, and provides. Your kind of professional kind of perspective or not, so whether it's. After a school play, instead of that, you know, we still have this charge and with or without, we are charging forward, so just as like a, just to kind of be real on, on, on that topic. So, that can happen on the, on, in December eleventh, if we, if we want, we can be, just begin our process. Um, as we would either way, or we can say, you know what? All good, we can, we can, we can push it, so, I just wanted to clarify that, I, I, you know, we aren't, we aren't waiting for her, it's just an opportunity that's, that's been made available to us.
Okay.
But you, I, you stay the same on twenty second for you, January?
I thought she was required for the meeting, and for us to discuss parking at a larger scale instead of us just.
Definitely not required, I just reached out and leaned on a professional relationship. Cause I thought the knowledge, I, I don't know how many of you are deeply knowledgeable about parking and that process. Uh, are you laughing because you know it all, Kim?
No, I'm laughing because I think your original point was good, I think we could use some help, and since I'm talking, I like January twenty second. I can't be there on the eleventh in person, so, that's an announcement.
Okay, so two for January?
No, I'll go, I, I think we definitely had some good discussion initially, and I think that was a good suggestion that you made was to bring her in, so I'd like to see that happen. Um, I think for the continuity, I think January second would be more appropriate so that we can just then transition the next couple of meetings and line it up as to those action items that we have on parking.
Great, and Jesse, Anne, where are you at?
Um, I think January twenty second sounds good, um.
Great.
But no problem with the eleventh if we needed to do that.
Thanks, send you.
I'm missing, I could do the eleventh fine, or twenty seconds fine.
All right, Franco?
I'm good for a holiday party on the eleventh, and then good for the parking on the twenty second.
All right, so parking on twenty second and party at Franco's house on the eleventh. Um, noted. Um, I like the idea of when someone is offering their time. And the idea of conflict with something is special is like a holiday play or something with kids. Um, as a parent, I would love to just give the space respectfully around that, and so let's just, let's go to the twenty second. Um, let's have a great December off, um, well.
Say it with your chest, Ellie.
That could be misinterpreted in twenty twenty five.
Yeah, we, th- there's one application out there that could potentially come on the eleventh, but we need to work with the applicant to see that, so. Eleventh up in the air, um, if that doesn't happen, we'll cancel it, if it does, we'll. Have a notice public hearing.
Okay.
And then parking in the new year.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner comments? Anne?
Um, I just have a quick question of staff, I don't think it's within our area, uh, but there was a huge article in the Sopra Sun today about the building department. Um, and it sounds like Ryan's on it, but I wanted to make sure that we touched base in case there's something we should be doing.
No, I don't think there's anything for the planning zoning commission, essentially it was an article about. The town has hired a new plans examiner and building inspector, um, the individual we hired. Um, has, has a lot of experience within the Roaring Fork Valley and elsewhere, so, um, name is Ben.
That person's official and coming on board?
Already on board.
Okay.
Um, yeah, Ben Chase is his name, he's worked in other municipalities and, um, the Roaring Fork Valley, so. He's well aware, he's already taken on a lot of, um. Uh, building permit reviews, we're still having safe build as another resource, and so we're hoping the combination of, of. More internal staff and continuing with our external help will, will help move some of the, um, applications forward and kind of as, as Ryan said in that, that, um. Article, you know, we, we own, we, the town own our portion in that, we're not solely responsible for all the delays that have occurred. Um, there's still a level of, um. Onus on applicants to make sure they're preparing complete, accurate applications, and that isn't always the case. Um, and that often leads to delays, but, um, you know, we're doing what we can to, to, to put resources behind that and improve. Turnaround times, you know, I was, I, I told my coworkers, you know, I would have loved to see the Sopra Sun also maybe survey some of our neighboring communities and. Understand what their permit review timelines are and how off basis we are, or what their permit volume is, but, um. You know, the article is what the article is, so.
But there's nothing, um, we as a board can do to support staff in helping them to get things. Pathetic, it's just all in, internal and.
This is not us.
People's opinions.
Yeah, it's really just beyond, I mean, and seriously, it's beyond the planning commission, and, you know, I appreciate the wanting to help, I just, um. Yeah, you, you probably don't want to wade into that. Um, but yeah, you know, I, we're, we're, we're really optimistic, you know, that, that he can take on a lot of projects here locally and, um. You know, between the combination, we can get stuff turned around, but also help with inspections, because that's also been a logjam. Where you just have one inspector or you're building officials going out and doing inspections too, that, that delays some of those other aspects.
All right, um. This meeting is adjourned.
Did we have staff updated or no?
Yeah, yeah.
That was our staff update, we hired a new plans examiner.
Okay.
The Carbondale Rural Fire Protection District's wealthy, um, what else? What else happened, we have a new, uh, youth or childcare district and childcare will be abundant. I think I summarized all the local ballot questions.
Boom.
All right, before the recording cuts, Franco, email me back, you owe me an email.
Damn, all right, thanks, folks, this meeting is adjourned, appreciate it.